Right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of the board supervisors of 27. One, Ben, the chair here, on board chairs, and I will start with Pledge of Inspectors. Right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of the board supervisors of 27. One, Ben, the chair here, on board chairs, and I will start with Pledge of Inspectors. Entertain approval of knowledge of getting a posting, please.
Set.
Do it first, oh, sorry.
Yes, so.
All favor, please.
Aye.
The passes would bring us to budget hearing. So this morning, we had the workshop at the share conference. And today, the budget hearing, board chambers, and just off the note that survives last says for the current make it because of pre-planned important equipment. And then for the six going forward, I'm talking to any couples, just want the will of the board is we continue the workshop portion. It's all the board to when, to when at nine AM. If the shares consume it, it's the board. And then the week we would consider continuing today's hearing, third day at nine AM, we'll just formally be that at the end if necessary. Sounds like it will, this is because still at least to analysis the intervention departments, what we'll discuss today. So Plan Pat and the wise we are on our regular end. It was received and taped from the CEO on the post and did clear your 520s budget. Oh, public hearing on the post, a budget see plus more by direction changes of the board to the proposed 526 and did good budget. CAO?
Good morning. I'm delighted. I can upload the presentation. Basically, as an information you have in the staff report and touches. What I'm going to sure to have as life intention, exciting for the situation. So you're allowed. Good afternoon, Mr. Board, Department Heads and General Public. My name is Paco. I'm TA for the 18 years. That to get me back. So sorry. So to me, I'm not budget fresh officer. Just want to show that everybody understands that I would not have budget officer. But what we to do best, what we have and consult services and pulling information on the system and managing together a budget mutation. They want to emphasize mostly on general fund budget when some run commission and tourist as I mentioned before, I would to go to that sort of the elements. They're not enough. We have also an analysis as part of budget. That let me again, for everybody's knowledge on somebody 25, or was related to TA regarding the Minnesota county to the 24, 25, 26. Under the additional provided by the board of advisors, we were, the condition was to have set as 15,000 for appropriate budget resources. And since it serves 510, this has to certify handles and so for new addition, that's when is the presentation. Hey, you want to mention this, you will smell. We have Alan operating reserves and interesting in our being transfers that the user reserves. And the one I'm used to have a reserve to happen improvement, as you as to remember, our budget is introduced to you back June included checks, clearly been project. What we did, we moved from general fund and put under the general fund resource as well as restricted general funds. And we also probably was direct and session we can caution with units. Make sure this, the post budget includes. We take auto supplies and expectation committed, we would to to go up to the government heads, be able to begin with a balanced budget. As you may recall, we have approximately 20 million dollars in debt and gap beginning the revenue and expenses. We're gonna like that, we're not gonna let that because have to get to that point and we it's gonna be vast. But by this, we cannot spend our funds, but what will happen when you insert. What we did as many before, we removed about 11 million dollars in capital improvement. And we're under restrictive reserves in the resource. And I will go explain a bit more about what it means to have restrictive reserves. So total, the total revenue we have today, chalated for 300 million dollars. The difference is additional revenue seen on the last week puts out revenues as 32 million dollars, 117,500. So that are good for a hundred. We have total of, if you see on this line, you see the absurd, you can see the curve, okay. So we're able to get approximately 18 million dollars in action reductions. We work with the army individually, we provide the demands I may recall the last evening we probably with an amount. And even of departments and additional tax. I do want to say that additional taxes were not met the number we provided at gaining. And so we're just trying to negotiate with what can can bite us, not ask them to make the decision up to the 20,000. And so we're choosing additional three million dollars that you can able to be on big slide me for a slide. So that's why we propose the additional reductions. We need 8.7 million dollars. What happened? And in that time, we only able to cure additional 3.3 million dollars, which means we still short. A total of 4 million dollars. I'm gonna be going on any course that you have. So we still have a shortfall or a gap of 4,935,000. Now, we were potentially providing you some recommendations. One of the recommendations was for loss. However, I would inform that the loss down that you see here is including all department. And so Miss Hen will be to prove what the state inverse is just providing me, which is 2 million dollars for the general and now for the for the entire officer, for the entire department, for all departments. And even if go for a lot at this scenario, which by the way, for those for two days a month, eight hours payday period, it's about 5 cents to totally temporary reductions inside. And just give you a spec of what it is. And that's the best route to to offer you options. It might not be best, but just put it on the table. So a real challenge today is to meet that gap 4.0 million dollars as a day, the 8 million dollars we have on 5 million dollars. My recommendation should be to continue working with parts, come out at this. And unfortunately, this require perhaps additional reduction, a native, or perhaps payoffs. But I'm here totally to do, just giving options of what potential be. Now, if we have, as I said before, 10 million dollars in reasons in the current financial gap of 4 million dollars. So I'm here for a question my have, don't know if you open the here for the black statements. Do you want to say we try to put the requirement, they mentioning that the elimination of some of the actives that we have. Some of them were undated, some of them were non-dated, so as to another to make the decision. We're wrong. We not really know how to provide dimensions. We want to make sure that we can repay for our bids that they provide with that into us. Losses as some that I recommend, be like I say, is is about percent in total. And this just the count of for September, I'm sorry, the actions of September 9, we have 2 million dollars and this have additional 3.3 million dollars. One that I do want to mention does not reflect in this measures. If some department writers that you know, reduction back in may be marching me when they prepare budget that's what ring. And some of those free tracks are not related budget. These are these are only reflected out of able to work with department along with that. I also want to mention that 800,000 dollars that the department writers to lose the deficit from the last fiscal year are not related budget. Say, sure, if you men were able to provide with 800,000 dollars, leaving it as it would increase the first, they started going to reserve. Otherwise, it would not be 24,000 dollars, actually 20 million, 20, 23 million dollars. So it's our health that the department, in addition to that, they all provide with that, you know, additional reductions. But I just want to point out that so you don't feel that, you know, I mean, not just trying to make her for us, they all with that to resolve the deficit we have, the out we have. Who stole the consultant's deficit gap. So this reflection of the 8 million dollars, the penny, the additional reduction to 3, 3 million dollars. And so I'm opening the door to the question you might have now.
Does anyone want to ask a question before we go to look comment? The question potentially clarify some of the remaining. We'll have to public hearing, you have public.
You'd like to come in and change, please write a skirt on zoom, spread our nine raised icon and chambers start with Barbara Thompson.
I present in concept of today's hearing that there should be to receive all of them briefly and you refer to that. I asked the board make the necessary reduction. The county council's office through now receiving already written department direction litigation line on that was spent into our previously, but I see incorporated as far as I could reduce the budget. I am going to drive it person just interested in county council's office and this staffing helping the board with the issues. But one, the proposed layoffs risk defacto out of saying of a legal function, the after reductions of greater percentage than their department would eliminate all room civil service positions in the house. A normal direction staff will reduce by certain percentage. If this upper production would prove it would increase land outside on a council, it would really increase clients' ransom correct risk. The should make a list, a common, the community extension of source, core legal function include cost volatility, potential spalling in the fear continuing not new advice work capacity institutionalization. Further, a fiscal study reliable determine outswing will more cost efficient longer than maintain horizontal staff, maybe beneficial to set study presented, don't know, unaware of a study finally being pleaded. Second, less are not required for addictions, we get another item to our outlaw, but they've not been accepted. Third, principles seniority normally in your staff are routine. We have attorney 30 years experience slated for off, we know their staff are some eight years experience slated for off. I want to know if the board has approached the contract to see whether they'd be willing to reuse staffing and staffing to be reused to reduce contract and staffing, if so, not. So let's see, recent prenus log add another person, their support staff and always two support staff, so there's only three individuals in a court capacity, only have the county empty to be left. Furthermore, the staffing reductions only get 5,000, 35,900. And next year, materials more specific, my requirements, there will be extra reduction. Furthermore, reduction in needed in the button futures could split me through your attention. I do question their mandatory reserve is necessary. The board look at that, look for board to make sure there's parity across department, departments really hungry staffing time and also has not. So those are basic heights, right? In the interest transparency, don't offer me here, there's no video, there's body, there's no, there's very transparent to the public.
Grab a copy.
The contractors that were discussed more is for me saying planning these public fees. And the reason the contractor was only approved was so he gave money at initial fiscal, that happened in Grainger's period. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, chambers, surely.
Good afternoon, truly fee dip, county council. I'm work today and appearing my personal capacity is not intended as lead advice, but personal statement. Barbara Thompson, Ellenson, I have all prepared and constant materials for your consideration that bide a lot of more deal than I could cover a minute. So refer to those also, and I've also reset it via some written events and meditation from the other June book hearing. So I guess here we are in, it's recommended, we recommend amended budget posing elimination of positions in the council office, you know, as. It's been, our positions have been off on several times at the June bit here. And thankfully, board previously restarted stated positions adopting the budget on June 26. LA prepared amended visions that provide to you on December 8 that would do county council business budget insufficient as targeted by the CAO's. To avoid eliminating our positions, copy those, also attached in the good I provide to you. Also, the sir Tomovich, public administrator, Steve, obviously identified in general, says two from my position, significant, as significant on my workload indicated those department. Ella has identified sufficient sources, found half of her mission public unders, but she's significant of her workload, we're not on that. Just recommend of our positions, leaving statements of 35,000 for her 90, and isn't a conforational cost that the county will undoubtedly to her outline my written. Council's office has insisted been goal maintaining the same staffing levels for over 10 years, all other have increased staffing significantly, as outlined in Barbara and his materials. I would recommend that those positions be reduced or be eliminating positions from our in and and full office. And I could respectfully commend bird buys the amended budget reinstated positions with the regions we previously suggested and or additional funds sources that have been used identified. Thank you.
Next, chambers, yeah.
Good afternoon, I took questions. I see this type of things build here, chambers of the pocket and beware of what's going on. So I don't know when the budget reflects that you have a contracted consultant helping you as advisor on a CAO position or not. Where's that $30,000 a year funded? And I understand goes through March. So where's it in the budget could not find specifically unless you have the consultants, which it should be a consultant, she under CAO. The county council has been doing and Barbara and some others on there, been doing HR work, and they keep crease their butt. One of the things that I thought, but before you hear this affirm is that their reputation, they come in for a dollar and by time the lies are paying a dollar. And that's exactly what's going on. They're contracted this, contracted that, and just getting increased hiring here. And how is it you can find me for a contractor would cost almost three times as much that it does for county council in-house? So instead of hiring your in-house county council, you need to reuse the contracts so they can curb the individuals who are actually here in the community, have been here in the community for a long time. And none outside council that isn't even in the committee. There's somebody at President Ackerman though, or even up in one of the partners up in Northern California. It was Andrew Hanny, you were supposed to do cost analysis, and that was talked about last year, and you've yet to come out of the column, as of what the night is, you should teach outside county council. And you need to do that, okay? You not sit there and you not justify that you're out to fire between 100 to 200 employees if you do its butt cuts right for the holidays. And it's only the female supervisors that have mentioned that they are willing to take some type of a pay cut. Why is it that chair, comic supervisors anger and supervisor lusts are completely quiet? You sit there literally seeing you sympathize with a key employee, you self-sit there, this month days will not take pay cut, show half the fee and take pay.
Next, chambers, the CAU cap, our under foreviewers speak, I have Glory Joan.
Good morning, board supervisors and Miss Chair. My name is Gina Kleinas, and serving senior key for your successors office, and I'm the chat president, say you to one. With me, Gloria Hernandez, chapter secretary has served to say past few years. Denise Keenan, after vice president, chief of years, loyal of the county for 23 years, power department. And Joan Rude, our chat treasurer, served agent for 18 years. Today, we're here today to present our mentor, that line work of us counting. Emi Dokey has been and continues to be one of the fastest growing counties in California, resulting in seeing proper tax revenues for consecutive past and current years, which is a primary resource of the enrollment. It is a shame that our workers livelihoods are apart cloud damage, the financial crisis due to the fortunate management of funds obtained by the patient's account. All apartment have direct impacts to the increase in population over years, and our members diligently provide essential services are going to every single day.
Many of members not only work here, but if you're a lady in our park community, we all drive the street, the road department works on. Many of our owners envy their property access that jury that are generated by the exercise and activated department. I'll churn go the same for surveys and system library, seek financial assistance or aid will help that in my service agency, all are checked to the law, simply by the sheriff's office.
We understand the need, correct budget is imperative and capital project are necessary. But always obligation as a county to continue to provide technical services to our community. The quality of the services are injured. We start considering losing our force numbers any way considering some departments are still currently under staffed. Management, I'm sorry, I say that our fund from the north with the resource management, agency, library, aggravation, district attorney, sheriff's assessors, tax editors, and the close record.
Well, know that by the need of the duty, financial gap be closed, and AIU 552 wants to collaborate, collaborative, we count fine solutions that will have minimal tax on our members and community. Publicly, the company has restated the possibility of offs, furloughs, and other takeaways are being concerned. We have been negotiating for over a little over month now and have no polls, official calculation as to how the county sticks the gap regarding members, which limited our data together on prices. Publicly, we asked that the county do the following. We asked that there are no layoffs to our catered workforce. Asked that the reserve be used to maintain staffing levels, we continue to provide the essential services to growing unity. We set a work even to our staff first before being passed to any out contractors. And we set any cut, furloughs, or takeaways, our members must face that management, administration, and board willingly accept for itself, in solidarity with its groups, be an example of true leadership is. We are here to continue work with the county and are hopeful that by team together, we come to a space that we can set and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, chairs, Ella.
Hey, I'm good afternoon, Chair. For to see a president, my name is Ellenson, and I'm a employee of the county council. I think that in my pride capacity, my comments should not be construed as per say they're the county in my department. On the ninth, I spearheaded my book client regarding elimination of position as well as the elimination of the remaining council employees on capable, that being Julie Tomlin and I'm so sure Murphy, Barbara Thompson, who now retired. At that time, I shared concern regarding the workload that position covers and asked you, Lord, who will absorb my test slime to laid off? The workload covers at least one half of T positions, if not two, and that is important to consider determining which department staff persons absorb my workload should be laid off. It's also being noted that this long contract excludes duties I man for my department. Furthermore, Vanessa Long does not have access to county accounting system and is therefore unable to process invoice claims for payment. Out of curiosity, for the week I filed analysis of all general fund department FTEs going to fill your 19 money and there's a path that the clerk provide to you. And I have some to put back for the public. What I discovered was some shocking. I want to point out that the last three fiscal years alone, county administrative office had 580 TE positions, not including fired prison. And this in addition to promotional class of issues, which were many. The handout I've provided was piled from quickly available document found the count of stuff. Regarding budget reduction, county council has combined restab away, meeting required reductions, and staff shown it's no need to eliminate council's current fill to bench the jet. Sherry Murphy, I, while the previous lawyer, but Tomson, have repeated provide those nonsense options that demonstrate reductions without reducing staff. Despite that, we're still facing layoff. It feels at this point that it is not, it's personal and it's greatly concerning to me. Thank you for letting me share my comments, and I still hope that you can throw alternative options to the what we've heard.
Next, chambers.
Afternoon. I want to express all this extremely the cultureation that everyone is in and for all the effort that has been going into trying to come up with solutions that have the, you know, this amount of pack on everyone. As we're, I just want for consideration, as we're thinking about furloughs, please keep in mind that as a behavioral department, we are mandated provide services to our residents. There are guidelines out by state around personnel. Currently, my department is under several creative action plans because we have such difficult hiring. That unless we can increase staff, we will say, and so if we decrease amount of hours that staff are available to provide my health and substance disorder services that further reach our capacity. So just for consideration, things are being considered. I just want to mention that, and I know you all are keenly aware of the benefit of the health substance disorder services and no one's took those and and complainant. Know where that I just wanted to highlight the points of the standards, staffing and service laws. And also, I put out that in my staff bill, Cal, we bring renew. So when we don't have staff, probably those little bull services, not bringing in revenue. So that I want to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, chamber, Ken.
Good afternoon, chair, members of the board, council, but a lot of things have said that is going to tag up on, you know, my department's men as using a TE. Well, I want to document if you look like I'm eating one, goes from 10, I think intention was to say abusing one. Also document on that, that I already got an unfilling. I'm a lot, Dana, Tracy, us, Ben, and people, five people do the work and I don't know if my renew was also in the process. I think it's still concerning me about the call plan being a thing that seems us and in departments aren't in our weight, guarantee you are in our weight, communicate to pay a lot on that plan. And it's very difficult for me to understand, our expenses are there. So as far as considering how you handle this, you got tough ahead of you, it's understood. I just speak full, at least for all of our outlook is cut the center points, come back, just cut your ready.
You and I have on zoom, Mr. Bruski, you've been muted, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I got it. Thank you very much. I'm trying to begin and I feel for everybody who just spoke about one month, everybody. I need to remember board supervisor, but money cannot be just magically appear. This band has ripped off finally and, you know, the county provides are good to do whatever is necessary to retain as much as they can. But bottom line, we are where we are, we are nice, yeah, everybody's operating with each other on this. Because what's the alternative? Do we want to declare bankruptcy or a state takeover? I tell you, as a public figure, I've been there, I've done that, scored it, I was on board, taking it on my stake. We did what was necessary to avoid that, and did, and so very successful. Now that said, if board could stop beating at the chops so that, like, can't participate in meetings, I would really appreciate it, just not seem reasonable to be in the sheriff's office unless there's a big, both I really have not in chambers. And I am really asking the supervisors, take anybody's advice, I think it was love from the council says, did own a Melissa or whatever, please, all of you go over, get an essence and explain why or it's not correct or a B check. And then finally, I believe that the board providers are too rightly right, like Tom Cuskey on does, what you are agreeing to and why. And circulate amongst yourselves, that's the beauty of it, and that would be a statement, this is what the budget is, what you do and why. And the unified understanding for us to read it and to not, what I'm worried about sometimes when there are statements by supervisors, they say, you know, from a body in on the supervisor or whatever. Now is the time to only use the words we and us, except we say I truly appreciate, because we need to come together, we need to gather as a team and present this, good, bad, whatever. And these are more in the same, and my my sex, what way to ease this burden is to pass perhaps a percent sales increase. At least I'm afraid of saying no county to post this, this is a jab. Again, it's painful from the side, I know, and I'm a people hate per se, but we are a key to this county and we are where we are.
That can't public me.
Thank you very much. We'll close all the here and we'll back to the board. The question, comments, who would like to begin? Supervisor, bro.
Um, well, thank you for the comments from all of the speak, but all the comments that I've saved directly from employees and department heads. I appreciate the presentation here. I really thank board and chair for workshops that is going to be ongoing, because I, we have more questions than do necessarily answers. When my big concerns is the department want to, I would like to have departments, when it comes to salaries. And I'm really having a time wringing my head on how salary benefits are being calculated and how that fits in the budget. And if there could be some information there that could be lost savings, because I, most reason and if it were a major issue in the past, and we had our own little symptoms to go through with that. I called it nasty cell, we come from add in the budget officer, because they would in all the number, and then I'd have a look at and go, well, that is not right, right for that employee, this, you know, rate is not the current rate of the employee. So having the department validate the salaries and if it is something, in my experience, I can't say right now, but in my experience, the cell went back for on step in courses and how much was your salary? What position were you in? Were you level one, level two, a level three in classification? It really made a difference in the overall budget, and if not agreement, this number accurate, I'm struggling. Right now, I'd be, that's my recommendation that we did at the workshop. I really would like to have more conversation at the board, at the board, but administration, CO, HR, and the department. I'm not hiding, open gov, have a little concern with, if we're not using OGOV correctly, garbage out and may not getting true costs of OGOV, that's my concerns. The other thing is, and I brought this up, this is, this is not an easy process. How do we get, I thank all the part for coming forward and seeing that we have, if it's not get any. What I don't like is here that there's comment out there from whether staff, the general public, I can't really take, I don't know what's come from, but we're not in a budget crisis. And one thinks we're not in a budget crisis, please go through and just review all of these comments we've been going through. We never provide this level of detail, as members, my experience in last years. I asked for things like this from our prior CAO and did not get it. We were instructed by our CAO, and we confirmed by our CAO and our RKR that we could take hit of raises, and that was the six and seven percent. I still don't see where six, seven percent had inflayed the overall cost, and I still am lost on what was that annual cost increase and how? How possible that we were informed that it was able to take the hit in the general fund? And I just feel like, honestly, was there another reason that was approved or that we told we could handle the hit? Because look what we've been given. I don't see that we ever make a six and ten percent increase. I don't. And I feel like board has all admitted that we wouldn't afford that based on what been given now, but we were told previously that it could be handled, it could take it. And I don't know if there is anything that council or CAO can into a bit. And I don't know if there is anything that council or CEO can get into, you know, some, some fact about this. Because if we could take it happened, why can't we take it now? What is it, the compounded effects of it from the future year? Why can't we do it if we're told could? Is there anything in what we're told was not only inaccurate, we think it absolutely was, but was, you know, either unlawful? I mean, I'm, I have always advocated for, pay for our employees. Being a former county employee, I know for a fact, all of you don't make enough money to what you do. We all had go of and beyond within the division that we're in, it's not right, it can't leave that if we for these increases that really now discovering we shove. So to harp on that, but I really would like county council and the CEO to look into this because from all of this, I think we've come into in the workshop today, salary and benefit are the one problem. We've seen the increase substantial, but we decrease employee recommendations. So how do we have an increase in salary benefit, but we're decreasing in actual F E's? The math doesn't make sense to me. I appreciate summaries that have been diced out, Ella, oh my gosh, you just F T be able to see his history is just gold in being able to see actuals from per year net to each year. Problem that I have is in going through actual costs for prior years, last 22, there's been a lack of consistency about where things are being posted. You're comparing apples to oranges, one year we boosted something under a set service and size, another year went on fixed assets. How can we up here be able to even understand the history of how and why the actuals are not making sense? Also, don't know your department trends, no? Your department have high budget years and they crush and have low budget years when it comes to net cost. So I think we just need to take the workshop, at the workshop, even though it's, it's painful to go through and all the questions, we don't go through it. We're kind of going blind on our decision making. And the last two years were things we asked for and last year as chair, I asked for information and it was not by the enemy. It was basically here, this is what we're telling you, you have to approve. And we as a board here don't want to be like that anymore. The reason we're getting so into the weeds is because I haven't been able to see all this data. This data now is more inviting, we do not have a balanced budget and out balance budget, just dig our hole deep and deeper. The only other thing I want to bring up is we are going to hopefully be continuing with this budgeting is when Supervisor Tello and I met with auditor's office was, I don't know how many months ago. And this was probably maybe roller, I'm not really sure when we met. But one of the things that did and informed the A O and account, but I want to make one to entire board. Are assigned when working at fund balances, note seventeen, the app for page eighty-seven. There were a few things in there that we kind of raised an eyebrow to, that I'd like raise an eyebrow to new CEO and council. Pipe nine fifty initiative, okay? Other governmental funds, I don't know enough about it, what the breakdown, what is it? I understand that it is a restricted fund. Was another one that was unassigned. So we have our general governmental, then we had operating operation contingency, we had emergency contingency and we had that contingency. We all have agreed working to fund at point time with us, we decide to take contingency, fill gap that the C A was talking about. There's another two, one of them is insurance and general liability. Insurance and general liability fund, eight million, one hundred eighty-two thousand was from fund balance ending June three of twenty-four. I don't know enough about that to understand and I like that to be another on the C A discuss. Then there's a river city, river cities and a sign fund and introduce some research and talk the orders off. And then at the three C E conferences last week, this was contingency account, the three C E, if you don't get three C E, you get your P and E bill distribution paid to P and E on that same bill. It's three C E and that's central post school issue that is our power supply. And we as a county are seven counties that manage that power supply, all the residents in our county. So you look at P and E bill, three C E fee in there, that three C E fee, when it started ten years ago, I thought it was ten, I think it was ten years ago. We each jurisdiction, all cities and all the counties had that money aside in contingency account, just in case three C E didn't. Well, guess what, three C E is doing very well and they're doing so well, they are not doing increases for power until actually see where fed regulations are made down. This will be the thing I have about tomorrow, but they have a balance right now, their contingency of about fifty percent. So they're fine and we are the last jurisdiction to have any in this restricted account, which was contingency. And standing for pitching out auditor's office, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is towards our gap. So no, it's not, I see the former, but of certain tax class treasurer wanting to comment, my understand from talked to three C executives, three C people, that money completely available to count. They were going to get us backup occupation that is no longer restricted funds. And I think the auditor's office sitting on with Supervisor Tello when I doubled through this. So right now, there were some of the really big items, comparing all the data, except for when it comes to the actuals of twenty twenty-five, so the inflation they received today in budget book shop. The actual of twenty, and so I'm looking for projections of twenty twenty-five actuals. And I would, if board willing, the C A's office, see if there's a web scene projections of actuals that we can have a better understand. I think it's huge, kind of our historical data that we're looking at and if there's a richen could coming in or a revenue that could be coming. Besides that, if it told me ten years ago, I'd be the one sit up, he hasn't elected a fill on the supervisors, be a prior county boy, I'd say, I don't know, but no. And then I'm sitting up here and seeing kind of this street. We, I appreciate C A and staff for all the time it took to gather this information to get to us because we are, as a board, in my opinion, a major chain in this case. We are looking at actual data, we're looking at real numbers, we're trying to get a grip on something that eventually would have bankrupted us, in my opinion. And you might agree that it's going to, but we kept going down path, we were vaguely budging with not coming contracts and having our cost incurred. We really are just kind of drawing blind and I think for the first time in a long time, we're getting back to actual numbers with actual commitment and how the, the salary benefit really affecting us. So I don't feel we have all the answers yet, but I think this is the first in moving us forward with a balanced budget, I think before. Making kind of the big leap of faith of being able to give in something is not easy. Understand, but also if we don't, we're not securing spare dollars of real. With that said, I really have other questions because we have such more to through, but thank you for your time, speak.
Thank you very much, Supervisor.
Yeah, thank you. Really recording the last point of the twenty-five actuals. So if I'm saying, and I'm Joe Paul, I need to help clarify, are the actuals up to this point not finished because there's departments that are still inputting information? Okay, so do we have idea of when they will complete though?
Could tell you that, that there are several parts that are not and there's not a committee schedule, that's where we're going to, you know, relieve, you know, where those acts are, they should be and they haven't been done. And so this is, this is kind of the, every year, this is the same, you know, answer that we, we pay. And it's tough, it's, you know. You know, this, the financial aspect of the county, it's not really been a priority and it should, it should be top priority for every department. And so to answer the question, oh, probably I'm going to have to decide when it's going to be cut off before we, we say okay more, even if they can have the fiscal year end. And just going to have to roll with that. And so we're probably looking in the, you know, later in the second week of October, later than that, probably too late, to be honest.
Right, thanks. Well, I guess I can see importance in our, because the problem that causes one of these things are so many because we can't, we don't have the actual number to work with, which is problematic. I had questions, I had question, and I see, correct me if I'm wrong, did you say H R was coming from a furlough, the furlough is different between general versus invented, the actual number?
Yes, she's according to print, the numbers with all employees versus the number with no fun employees.
Oh, you could have that, great.
Good morning, Supervisors, let me my glasses, it's going to be a little back and forth, I apologize because print is very small. Right now, and furlough is to be compared, so obviously that is something that still has to be discussed, union, but I could use some preliminary gear right now. We based it on general fund only first and I'll give you a percentage salary as well. If they're one day month, it's October four, that's interesting, would be total nine days through into the fifth year, June third of twenty-six. It's a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar, which is about one point four percent of salary. Two day per month, excuse me, days per, which would be one day per period, which equals to about eighteen days. It is one million, four six thousand two nine, which equates to about two point eight in the percent salary.
Okay, is there more?
No, I, what I use, I have the breakdown for in general fund as well, and I also have the breakdown for if you combine general with, with general as well. So I bet that this prior is really general fund, so.
So the, the day per period, point eight, that's instead of affecting, you were just general fund, point one zero.
Yeah, just a little, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so a couple lots, because we mentioned earlier with disaster relief, five hundred thousand dollars. So we operate at fifty percent, the receiver is a five percent and then disaster for five hundred thousand. If to me, of one category, I could, I could, I would just have one simple category, as well, so I don't think you do that, I know at least operating emergency. I'm trying to get rid of disaster, a separate category and it's saying we don't think that should happen or we don't money, I'd rather just, if anything, it'd be absorbed into other emergency or open reserves. Because I don't understand the purpose of having a set like, to me, it doesn't, doesn't really help anything, just cause more confusion in my opinion. The furlough question, so I believe you said you like the furlough, if you wanted to hybrid that or what exactly, but.
Of course, simply take a day off every week, eight hours, no pay, that's salary increase and stuff. If you do twice a month, that is a tempting or less well, I'll click it, so I won't really recommend. I'm going to clarify a matter of statements that were made, if you allow me to touch. The importance of have this reductions is following. Keep pushing for a time, my one thing, I will not recommend you do that. Yes, we can get them for every piece, we can change three, we can change some of one money, hundred thousand dollars of the, the disaster money. But the reality is, it's brand date and next year we're going to be the same to as we are today. Each year we'll be having this company, make the fight. The reserves should be high now and not there anymore. You are the borderline, the borderline of having a crisis, financial crisis. If you start to reduce your costs and balance your costs with a balanced budget, balance the costs with revenue you have. If you push this, the expense up and then one time in the revenue to make even, it doesn't work, eventually it will eat you back. So I just don't want I see to choose one time. I think one time I should reserve for what contingency we may have, and the sure emergency we may have. Maybe as we sit now at the full level, we're not seeing as much in as used to as we receive. We don't have, they're going to go future, we may be recently less than that. It is important for us to continue into the serve. It's not me that was sitting there doing nothing, my there is there, for the ultimate immunity, eventually continue adding the service. So I'm just a cloud like that, please, I'm telling you to do my redundantness, do what's right to continue working this game, to continue just need to put the service to the community. If you do this to you one time, very fix your to have this situation. I know it hurts, but it's going to better there's one, that you know what they do a year and back a quarter, sorry, next year, I'm just saying.
Thank you, and I'd declare, I'm, I'm in good agreement, I don't, I agree a hundred percent, I understand she would time fund. And as I said, I wasn't necessarily saying that Astor might have put an advantage on this, I said she eliminated Catabank could be observed into the observer. But I agree that the one time funding issue is not a solution at all, it's a delay. Probably will end up getting worse and it does actually in the past. So I am agreement with, with the issue of the one time funding. And as Supervisor Cross said, we have more work to do tomorrow, actually Wednesday, the workshop, to can you clean some numbers straight up? If you were, there were clean today, there's a lot of gush, a lot of questions gotten and more that need to work through those, that's all.
Supervisor Tello.
Thank you. Okay, so I've got two different slides that I want to kind of go, or I must start with the summary proposed on Med Budget from two twenty-five of the green pick one. Just want to make sure that I'm standing this very clearly. Okay, so on the left hand side, it shows general fund revenues, the operating expenditures, and some of the adjustments that have made the gap that we have of point nine million roughly. Okay, now go to the bottom. Being very, I'm trying to see, and it is very small, so beginning reserves adjusted the E R D.
Yes.
Okay, so just reserves looks like our beginning reserve balance is twenty-six point seven million dollars.
Yes, because as mentioned before, then first reaching and as the departments start translating those, so it's good then. Having front numbers in this case, the store, we moved this just from last week, it moved about three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars more. Well, changing and everybody compute their information.
Yeah, and I, you know, unfortunately, the numbers continue changing. Well, let me get my question because I thought, the question is so much, that has changed. We want clarification on, so we have our capital that we're going to be using out of the reserves, the seven million dollars for the road project we committed to a library.
Yes.
Okay, it was a seven million, this total that is nineteen, nine point seven million.
As you have reserves.
Financial gap is included here at four point nine million dollars.
That means your server will know.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to find, figure out that was suggesting that we use five million dollars from reserves because on the right hand side, all the minimum reserves and everything articulated with this point nine million dollars being used in reserves fund gap between, kind of falling apart. So I guess I want to be very clear, kind of what your judgment is or your recommendation is because the way slide is sent to me saying is, go ahead, you protect like close the four point nine million. Go ahead, we'll balance essentially, right? And then yours, our reserves would be on the hands.
It's not a suggestion, but I'm seeing it, if you were to use, because I have a lot of departments, you can use the serve. So if you use the serve out of the nineteen million dollars you have, you will be having a total of only zero four million dollars. Now, if you go back to the right side, you have two, you have minimum right now because we have with current, you have a with current of fifty percent reserves. You're not needing reserve, if you're lower, if you use those four million dollars, you already reduce your, your, your reserve, and meet the minimum reserve. That's what I'm saying on the right side on the, minimum reserve will be five million dollars, nine hundred forty.
Right, but if you took, okay, if you use the financial gap, the four point nine million, they're getting onto this two million. But if you tell, got to add it back into the, so it's much actually higher what we're presenting, that's my point this, that it, you know, now what you're seeing, okay, but still be out of desert. But if that's only if we take the four point nine million and we use that for.
Not make that reserve.
Because she, we, we have twelve million is what that we had in there, now we're at twenty-six million, almost twenty-seven million. If we got the seven million that we committed to the capital projects, we're at eighteen million dollars, we're not at fourteen or fifteen, at nineteen million. But we're using numbers of fourteen, fifteen million, so where's the extra? That's my point, that there's a little misleading, because for me, it's not.
So because your direction was to add, take out all those projects out of general, this seven million dollars plus food draft, we put it out of resource, use servants, post project, that's what it, what you have there.
Right, I get all of that.
So twenty million dollars, it's also a suggestion for how you can use resources to make up the gap we have. So I put it up there, just your perspective, what will, what will be if you use that? I'm giving you a perspective of what would happen. It's set on right side, on the right side, says, if you continue having gap, you mean, you not being the reserves. So I had to calculate that fifteen percent over the budget, but the average, you have, so you need fifteen million dollars reserves. You don't have them if we're choosing the four million dollars, it's not that makes sense.
It makes sense, I guess I look, think about it a little differently from its.
Yes, I have the break share was provided to me, to move seven million dollars from I just so I get up.
But I understand all of it, it's just for me, there's a little confusing her saying, which, and if, if we use money, cover the gap, you're, we're going to end up with nine, twenty million dollars in reserves.
That's right.
Not at fifteen or fifteen, that we are funded at higher than fifteen percent. I guess, and I might, so I will be very clear to the public of what that was like. Like right now, we're saying, we're kind of creating like dire straits, oh my God, you're going to fall below fifteen percent, which, that is only if we did it a percent of gas rate, right? So I think, but for the way it presented, it was kind of like, here's what we have in reserve, here's what, here, you know, the deduction, the cattle project that we've committed to and taking out the general fund, using reserve for it. And then here where fell, right, I think it was like seventeen million, of that was like two, four million was left potentially that could use. Now, that also means that assumes that nothing is going to happen in year, or maybe a little bit of them for this or that or whatever, but that was playroom, right?
Probably was, that's the number would be available if make a budget, if you come to their reserves next, with revenue and, and spend, that will be, you may lie. But if you meet that, if you don't have expenses, meet the revenue, then you don't have that amount, that's what I'm trying to say. And I apologize for excuses, basically is, the more expenses you have, the more expenditure you have.
Okay.
So more, you have to reduce expenses, because the more that you reduce the expenses, as the operation budget, the percent becomes less and less. And then you have server available play around beside the fifteen percent, lies for five, five percent contingency of one thousand dollars or decide five thousand dollars.
Okay.
But if you don't need the expenditure, then two percent goes up and you are required to have more reserves.
Right, so what you're saying, your debt base of expenditures, uh.
That's what I keep emphasizing, you need to, revenues and expenses.
No doubt about that, we, I think we've, we've got to a place where we have learned to live in our means unfortunately, so.
I will have a seven, five hundred fifty that I can, I can, I just want to give up and get out. And the times when I'm squishy, that's what is to me, you can afford it, you.
Okay, so the other slide is the position one, I've got a question, I think it'll, let me put up on one second. Is the proposed unended elimination of dishes, which I don't leave as part of that, the package, no. And one of my questions going to, how accurate is this spreadsheet? Because as raised, as I've kind of done it. So some calculations seem a little bit wrong, the action or start when I was just thinking away one and then it equals cento.
Clarification process, there was some one that makes no sense because some of those, those positions have a cost. So we're saying the way he does line, this is that true savings are after you pay all the accruals, huge savings a day for this fiscal year. Next year, those savings can go up to one point three million dollars, one point million dollars. But it's detrimental for you, for me to tell you those, uh, fish elimination, those positions are be a chicken and desk career or not. But we eventually will land that in the next fiscal year as well. We still have responsibility, we have this known liability and I would like to bring what under liabilities are. So let's say I have a five years and a crew, kind of a conviction and five hundred dollars in sick leave. The time I leave, the county has to meet the accruals. Unfortunately, the county doesn't have reserve to pay accruals. So every time that we're leaving department hiring account, the general fund staff, the consequences I have, that's called unfund liabilities. We need to make sure to create. Um, we need to make just create a better plan, when you plan, because we will count all the underliables and they can work out about three, five dollars. I don't, you have a first aware in the general, but also have underliabilities aside.
So is is why, like, okay, let's counsel instance, and it listed, I think, as do uh, filled positions funded, the county council there, and says impact of it thirty thousand four hundred ninety. So I think I'm understanding you correctly, that is, is that's, that be the true savings potentially this year with the unfund liability taken in consideration, am I understanding that correctly? I mean, I got it, I thought position only thirty thousand.
Because paying up all accruals, so it's true saving for this year, this is saving the future now.
Okay.
By eliminating those positions, we're still eliminating costs that are related those positions, all success, everything else. The calculation is a forty cent, um, uh, forty cent uh, reductions for next fiscal year, this next fiscal year.
Forty cent of county council total budget or?
Because I know there's reception and a big council in general. Hope is having county council is it can take all the, all the fees of county council. And I know there's some conversation about grants cannot allocate a patient and they can't base some grants. Let's be here, how many projects have the year? This could, how many construction projects have? Any country have beautiful construction projects? So if you look at it, you have me like B, that especially paid also for all you want in deal. I'm getting the options. So next year, we're not gonna have many projects anymore. Our projects are gonna be used, it will be less to view on any countryside. We already have a customer firm, and that was, my decision was a decision three years ago. Then what puts a having, any firm is able to work, having additional employees for this, for the same um department, just it's not sustainable. Why do I have cars arrived, I only use one? You have to pay attention, you have the additional cost, you can't do that. So I think it's a time starting and then the idea is, we should start doing that's ever. Everything like trial, um, slides, positions, it's to um, to eliminate positions, I get. But it's, it's time right now to do, because if you delay this, it's gonna hurt you next year. Here you be sitting over here, same shit, over and over.
Okay, so.
County council, I'm trying to be in way, the contest not increase, country just.
Okay, so, but what you're suggesting is um, nine.
Positions.
Nine positions.
Are the positions are given to, but this should not can you can make decision?
Okay, so nine positions would be eliminated, and then that's us to.
And eleven funded positions. Eleven funded positions, but then.
Right, vacant, so it's not this somebody who has that. And the empty on potentially the department, okay. Um, not only gets to two point one.
Yes.
Five million, basically.
Year, but like say four.
But we still have a trillion, almost three million dollars.
What, a trillion, uh, yes, we should have a cap.
I understand that correct?
Yes.
So this is unfunded, or this is, there are positions that are to be funded, though we nine of them, gets to the two point one, still have another two point, two point nine, that we have a gap of two point or two point nine.
You have four point nine million dollars.
But we're, but this two point one.
Is ready, cut it into, into, let me go to.
So four point nine on top of this point.
The two point, two point one million dollars with prior reductions, the three point three million dollars.
Okay, we still have four point million.
Eight million dollars. We reduce two point one forty with um, and and then this, let's see, what is this in the part, I'm sorry, let me get to you.
Can we get a little bigger next time? It's so small. I'm backing up between my computer and the thing, just to read.
Yes. It's one of them, let's see if, back six days, I don't know if this two days, but it's okay.
There, I see it. So it's the spent as of twenty two day, so basically asking, it's three point three nine, still have our four point nine.
Yes.
That we need to, we're still coming up short, four point nine, including the proposed.
You see this shot, you have, it says accruals on this side. Crouches was reduced one point two million dollars, and that supplies, it made everything you can. And it's uh, it's the elimination of positions together, and three point nine million dollars, twenty million dollars.
Okay.
And so that we still have million dollars.
Okay.
It's not appropriate, it has to eat your fun.
Okay. Well, I thank you for all of work you done, to put heads on, board has done to date, um, start with about a twenty five million, now we're down to a lot of five million. Um, it's very good, and um. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry that in this situation, I feel though, that we gotta figure out a path, we have to figure out how to live in our means, only bring in X revenue. We keep spending way more bringing in, and though, we're gonna have to figure this out, we're gonna have to figure it out together. Um, I am, and I think the board as a whole, we are very committed to this. We are redoing the work, we really are trying to get to the bottom of this, understand this, um, really are considering impacts to the community, are considering the impacts to our employees. Um, unfortunately, a position that we'll be in, um, but we've got this, gotta do it together. Um, so I.
Can you clarify about the resource? One of the reasons the reserves up is because a year, we have a fiscal year twenty twenty five. And you end up this year deficit, it's the source from the the following years. If you have a thirty million dollars reserve in this fiscal year, but you have a lot of millions, then resources is twenty million dollars in excess. What happens here is we were able to increase the reserves. They had a thousand dollars from the department, some additional thing from probation, probation department, but you had need six million dollars to stop. And so that is what's so important to keep budget placed, to meet the revenue, the expenditures, so next year, the reserves not get packed. If any, if we restrict what the others during year, next year, you have an opportunity to increase on the reserve. We don't have to be restricted and maintain and contain budget reserve. That's how we matter.
Okay, thank you. Um, I agree with a lot of the things supervisor said, and um, I would like counsel look into, there's, you know, anything that can be done. Um, pardons of the others, maybe we were then, potentially led us to the situation where now, maybe that's not the reason, I really don't know. Um, but I carry a weight, my shoulders, my heart, and I, I just am so sorry to everybody, to this community, and to all our employees that um, were in this situation at such scary time for, for all of us. And so um, I am committed to continue working this, made of doing whatever I can to gear out crisis strategies, bring in revenue, I think that's the bottom line, we got to gear out, how to bring in more revenue. So I um, I support of as well, and we've got it on this, so then later, I don't think the person tax increase potentially going on the butt does anything for this year, but potentially for the future. So I support of us move forward in direction. Um, I just don't, I mean, I think we're gonna through this budget, we're gonna end up having the same issue next year, right? Like we're, and so I think we've got, start thinking about long term, because I have this county, and I don't see how we would just cut the back of um, our workforce. And so I think we gotta be looking for ways that we can bring in more revenue, so I think we needs to be a priority, and I think got us working that immediately. So anyway, those are my comments for now. I look forward to continuing our budget workshop and um, continuing the public hearings, thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. I just want to thank CEO, Paul Warren, um, you really stepped into our challenge situation here, and you're working the hours, and um, you're committed to this, so thank you for that. Um, you know, can I mention we'd be here without you, so thank you. Thank you all to departments who stepped forward and offered some ways to help uh, the software base. There's a, a sub, and it's um, some restrictions that are moving us forward, we need it. Um, for the board, you know, and this, this process to many months ago, I think everybody knows that us questioning um, a lot comes just any more information, president, ask the rest of board, if we're all you need. We, we need more information, getting information, um, information, we all have, the public has, the union have, the information that we have, we're not, uh, we want as much as we can get, we can make big decisions um, for the, for the organization, for all the pull at work, uh, for Sam County. And that's, we're gonna continue with workshops, you know, I don't think any major decisions or recommendations coming here today, continue these workshops, continue adding more questions, inviting public out um, to those. And continue uh, can coagulate with unions, with the department heads, because we still have a lot more to do here, get our valid budget balance. Um, I, you know, I think, I do an extent with supervisor lattice is that um, I think we're, you know, think we're continuing to sell questions throughout the, you know, some mispieces of this puzzle. We didn't, you know, you can say we twenty seven million dollar deficit, you could say we had a fifty million dollars deficit, we had a fifty million dollar deficit or forty, whatever it was, makes for existing headlines in the news with slow days and all that. But we had a forty million dollar deficit, we didn't twenty seven million deficit, had requests for sending that far seated revenues that we have. And our job as supervisors to uh, make challenging decisions, balance budget, um, you know, we still have a lot of question marks, because we need to, we all recognize that, you know, you need to, to clip the very flood process. And it was just, was, you know, in the board minority from review, and I was sitting up harping about vacant budgeting. I was sitting up here questioning budget expenditure and getting criticized for, by saying people that have all the opinion, criticize me not questioning enough, telling me that should have been spending a lot more, I was in those, you know, statements, and pushing against budgets. The only supervisor, or for supervisor, or for CAO has been to put it against the budget. Um, and so I, you know, I've been questioning this for years, I'm just glad that, that we're up here and we're united, we need to fix this. And we keep playing the guessing game any longer with vacant budgeting nonsense, where uh, we're essentially giving apartment, what I've all the, I've been saying for years, isn't thirsty, I've been saying, they've been giving departments flexible spend counts by allowing them to come in and budget for more position than they knew, than they knew they needed, than they were going to fill. Eventually, it was going to catch up to us, now it has caught to us. And um, you know, I know I talk again, use, use one mixed features, um, you know, board decided there's a reserve that's physically healthy, it's not, it's not an arbitrary number, this is what I know, and responsible, have uh, two percent reserve. And when I'm seeing one time monies, absolutely not, I, if you had a broken car and you have a bunch of broken parts on a car, I could fix most of the parts, you're gonna fix all the parts. If you leave one of those broken parts unfix, the car is actually gonna be down end, and I'm gonna sit up and fix most of the parts, need to fix all the parts, make sure we don't break down again. And uh, make sure we're not kicking can on the road any longer, and to do every we can from policy standpoint, um, when it comes to clarity and understanding budgets, uh, we need, we're gonna building this A O vulnerable, and she expects that. And C A O gonna have hold the difference available from a management standpoint, make sure they don't have uh, uh, these mirrors come in only the the next fiscal year, it's just, we can't operate like this any longer. And so I fully respect the A O, if you want to name any going forward apartments, you can get her responsible. If you do not have your budget and your numbers done time and for, um, and uh, you know, I think we've agreed, have to separate all those operational needs, one, those one time capital expenditures. But I got, I got a way now, you know, that even if, and we will, we have the four point nine million dollars to go, I'm hopeful, and to miss that, we can find some reason the budget are coming errors. Um, but we're gonna be balancing budget by doing, by severe cutting the amount of capital needs we uh, do need in that. We have a hundred million dollar facility need, we have a hundred million dollars in road improvement needs. You know, some of the don't like that we're any road improvements here, we're not doing really enough roads this year. Um, and can't, and we can't continue to budget and have doing roads somehow uh, selling a punishment, it should just be seen as a standard. And so um, you know, balance this budget, but really have a lot of work to do going for it in the year ahead, make sure that we are setting aside sufficient funds for roads, for facilities. Um, we do, and we need to find a way um, to run revenue. Uh, I think part is business community, need to improve our uh, you know, biz uh, our revenue from businesses, I think starting to work on that uh, with the Helen's dip program, is people, and with tourism, have, and promote commercial opportunities in the community, in the place. I think the debates, I've seen this community, whether it's like it or not, um, I think community is pretty loud, they don't want to uh, commercialize a part of the rural community, but there are areas where uh, we can do better as a community to um, the better opportunities that are there culturally. Uh, industrial areas in the county in particular, near the port, we actually need to darken those things and just uh, see it. So uh, we can do better, uh, very full at going to get done. Um, we just can't hand download any longer, it's our duty to stabilize this budget, and that's what we're gonna do. And uh, I'm look forward to continuing to work with our colleague, I, you know, much as, but like, and the committee like sort of separates out, um, there's, apparently there's a man win, I, I thought was this, I thought was system was kind of immense, I guess, out of your people. Uh, but this board is united, and we all see this to be fixed, there isn't a, there is divin on this board, um, we're all, we're all working together, cooperative, we're gonna get this done. So thank you very much, uh, that we've talked about uh, scheduling the next workshop, Wednesday, continuing the hearing uh, for Thursday, and for Razer, it looks like it's something to say.
I'm really sorry, I'm reviewing some information we received from public also, uh, kind of now you've presented, see your logic is, is doing some other, so if we could take moment, just moment, it could go back to the F T positions, then add the Sambito uh, can propose unfunded elimination one. And no, not that one, it's one that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I know what you're talking about.
What I mean. Right, well, I started reviewing it, so just want to point out a couple of things after hearing some of the public, but also reviewing uh, some, what it was really good, the more cut than this, than what was showing from what we see from um, uh, county council staff. I want to point out a couple of things. One is, uh, when you go to the library on that Excel, it says eight, then it says zero, it has no savings. It's supposed to be an eight, and A, and there is no cut.
There's not.
There's no, so that'd be an eight, and that column says total of T positions fill, and it's a zero, because it looks like you got all the staff and no safety down bottom. It's a, from the right. That'd be an eight. So then, leaning at another one, which is the egg commissioner, if you to the egg commissioner, the egg commissioner is showing, and is not the extension, this is actually the egg, let me make sure this right, uh, egg mission, it has nine, minus one, should be eight. Okay, and then, and I don't know if it reflects where in your all around.
It's just a title.
Okay.
You have to attend work at the club.
Get it.
Fish in it.
It's not, it's just so that we can make sure we're on the same page, many positions in each of the department, and this, this is a master list of jail fund departments, this is where I want to talk about all the departments looking at this number, at the number, and assign determining, do they have those issues? Are, are these men, what physically have in pool? Because I, I, I swear my confidence is not uh, strong. Um, the other thing is, there is under administration, there is disaster recovery, and from workshop, we talked about the division ten forty single disaster program, we said it's communication, and it's the program for the system, it's the equip for the system. But it says, according to this, our new F T, you look the expenditures from the budget, which were handed us shortly, which is this one, the bin that we got A. If you go to expenditures on this, it shows under division ten forty seven disaster recovery, it shows multiple lines of salary event. So I'm talking eight four thousand is a contract, which is fine, because probably the contract itself, but it shows three thousand five hundred fifty thousand, forty four thousand, has all the regular time, time overtime, uh, taxes, Medicare, and unemployment. And if we don't have any staff in that, why we have an objection, but so these are, is that we go through, I just, I'm not a hundred percent confident right now that our salary and benefit are equal to what the staff actually have on ground. And that's, I have to say, thank you so much, Mr. Jeff, and I'll stop looking at numbers now, sometimes the table with the numbers.
Thank you.
So uh, we have a presentation on a break back, and I'm sorry, this one, keep forgetting. So the next step of our request is what you guys would like to, and the presentation to have today.
Supervisors, I think state um, for mind, that um, we're gonna keep working and have these discussions, we're gonna continue workshop format.
Um, actually, we continue having decisions, and someday we need to do the budget, and do return the budget.
That's correct, yeah, I mean. Go for it.
Just verifying purpose, are you asking us to take action today on, we can get in, um, continue public hearing, are you asking us for on the proposed undid elimination position, are you asking us to take action on that today?
No, I'm asking for direct, would you like to go from here, knowing that you already have four point nine, four point million deficit? Why would I just to change you, because I can just remember next meeting, I won't any.
I welcome that, continue working with unions and the department heads on the restriction, I don't, unless there are other suggestions for scut. Uh, you're asking for specific direction?
Direct, yes, because I come by the same numbers, which still have deficits, so I need to run from you.
I mean, from my end, I want to continue workshop that we can do our best to close that gap, um, and find some balls, problem, potential problem there within the bit, and we're gonna work, we're gonna work through uh, right up until the deadline, get that done. But in time, I see, we make assumptions, we assume we're going to um, you know, couple them sort of, you go and the board, and so she's, she's keen for specific direction, and anybody else in the super circle?
My specific direction is, we've been confident about our but number and salary benefits, right now, I don't think content, so if that be verified, that departments are in agreement with the correction that we just made on that um, number of F T position, they see that positions are looking potentially cut. Also, do you agree that those are positions that they remain, and that that overall loss? And that verification is going to make me feel confident about, okay, well, now we're gonna have to there come more, or we've never, we are to be a reduced, because just looking at few departments that compared, what's entered the system, it, it, it seems a little off. So that could be one, my only other suggestion is, and haven't necessarily talked about this, and I know if I'm breaking any rules, maybe I shouldn't say it, um, we've talked about furloughs, and you do not reckon furlough, it, it's a bait. Oh, gosh, you guys are all gonna, because the only other option we have is, do we roll back on some of the raises that we gave of six and seven? I'm willing to take that roll back, I'm willing to take a furlough, but if we're not willing to look how we this long term, long term is rolling back raises, and I hate saying that to you, because it made me sick to say this. But I don't see how we're going to get that number without cutting more people, we don't want to, we need the staff, and uh, and every staff member you could, has a implement, an issue with um, buyout, which is going to even make the cut, you heard us more, because then we have buyout and all the benefits that have to recruit or whatever. So I, my only thing be to have conversation and uh, the board link to uh, rec you to negotiate what back could that, I'm not saying how to roll back, what could it back like? You guys can hate me, but I'm really sorry, I feel the tears.
Just direct to work, go light up soon for the year, but not really an actual term. And then he cuts, and then they eat and achieve what they lost, what they need as well.
And for me, I think you have to have, I don't want to let it back on, but what are you directing to balance the budget? We're gonna do, I'm just, just what my slogan get to keep working on this, and keep not um, kind of board to, to look some of these resources right. We are just seeing unbelievably, we now are just getting plethora of made to look at this confirmation I was pending uh, many months ago. Uh, and so I think we need to have ourselves at least next week to have working other, find solutions in this. I think in the meantime, you do to continue to have those conversations, the unions with the Chris solutions that we're in, in the meantime, because you've, you know, on, so I know some of these are people, but um, there was some process. When we, you know, previously said, we were a dire dire situation, you know, we were talking about forty eight million dollar fictional offices, we became twenty seven, they became nine, now it's five. So like, we just continue on the front, um, but, but for me, we just, I always said along, I want to have the units involved, the departments involved, and just kind of keep having those conversations. That's where I'm at.
Okay, here. Yeah, I just, I agree, and I, it needs to be stated explicitly, I would support.
Okay, here. Yeah, I just, I agree, and I, it needs to be stated explicitly, I would support, at least, given the ability to get into what is a correction, so we know the facts of our options as far as roll back or anything like that, so we have information if we want to explore.
That's good.
Mr. Kurt?
Yes.
Uh, the only thing on this, um, uh, positions, unfunded elimination position, I believe the column that is number of F T E position, I think you have asked there, and I believe asked is there, not written, but that already was a cut that happened previously, discussed in prime budget meetings. So my question is, are those number, I'd like to see, where we are right now, so for example, if a department and they have eleven time of length, they already previously gave two positions during the two night, now they're being a third position, which is actually cut even. So we're seeing how each department is being impacted from current standing full time employees that have people in the position, which is the against versus how it might have been registered, because otherwise, it looks not as bad. If you're losing one position, but in reality, you gave up two positions previously, that didn't know them here, and I, that information would be happier.
What is the history of all the bits in us, your example?
Well, where are we right now, at all the positions that we have in the department, if we went way back, I mean, I think what was hinted to by, by some stat that put together, is very helpful for me, and if you really want to go back, see how it is, it's like how back we want to go, we had the redundance in day twelve, well, it, it's a waste to go far back. I just have to look where we are right now, what are we thinking, headings already being done up by departments, what we're adding additionally up, and, and weighing the difference between full time positions with people in them versus the vacant, right now, and how much each are being cut, so we see it as a whole.
And this, and this light, actually, we have number of positions that are, we can separate from.
Look at them, I can be already just inable departments, that first row of number of F T positions does not necessarily reflect where they are right this second.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Okay.
And, um, slide before we finalize the continuing hearings, did, um, request a call plan breakdowns for transparency, staff need to work and writing information, the call plan, accounting, um, and the, we are going to continue our department, department, uh, analysis through workshop process. Um, we had asked for review of P A R, all these funds.
There will be a next hearing, and that was the hearing.
Okay.
This is just your fun, I mean, but with all the accounts as well.
We've requested, uh, I know it's challenging, but if they're fourteen, seven, simply million dollar amount, contracts, consults, other charges.
Okay.
To, to get thorough down of those.
As I mentioned before, and I clarify what everybody now turn up a hearing, that problem that we have is that the clerk of war, maintenance in the system, the archive system, only because they have to order supervisor. However, there is number of contracts are not going to order supervisor approve, because that's right of, uh, the authority that C O has to prove contracts. So those contracts have, are out of high interest, that even skip the information, is for us to all information bringing together, so what we can do is just with each, to provide with caps of all the contracts, so we update less contract, because this point is unknown, the number of contracts we can wire.
And more early, we're talking on a fund here.
Right, but I'm guessing you have account for every single contract.
Right.
And for to have a, an arc of that, so you don't have it for them, because you buy already the C O, two nine contracts, those contracts were made to the board supervisor, that's one of the reasons I asked to have miscellaneous orders, are in the budget, the agenda. So every contract that is signed has a location and agenda, so the clerk of war, narc, those statements, and we sat for, for many years, or I reached review on contract sign twenty one, I wasn't aware of contract, has five amendments, never made it to the one who provides. So that's what I think we need to get into it.
Okay. Whatever it is to get it, we have, at some point, we've got, at some point, so for the sake for ours, we're making decisions, it's fifty million dollars of our budget, and there's all, there's talent, we've got, we just have these nerves, we have to. You share, you have some?
Mr. Kurt, I'm sorry, do you have anything? Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little lost on force post minister comment, but it may, it's to continue Thursday, I'll be out of state, Thursday, I'll try to join remotely, but not going to be able to present, there's just a few that I want to go today. Um, and one is to ask Sharon, as our office, um, being candid, it is, most of my comments are acted to board, also looking to staff, and to all of our community friends, and all the employees that is counting, and when they look at our office. Um, as time, I, I do feel personally like on an eye a little bit, the sheriff's office is a huge, uh, portion of the general fund, and a lot of that is, um, just the design of the government, regulations that we all under, and what the community expects to keep safe, but it's a huge part of budget, or easy to get. And I think maybe that's what a little bit, um, last bit of time is what, um, what's been going around here, so, um, to get too off topic, clearly, there's something different in this country over the last couple of weeks that have, my family have, um, started a lot of discussion with my daughter about staying with me, without being, speaking on its right, and not trying to stay behind the shadows, sometimes staying silent speaks a lot more than speaking up. So there are a few things I need to go, well, sure, everything in this county is short, you know that, know that, my wife for this county, devastating for her to be off, uh, I have other family members in this county, and so, uh, it's not, it's not allowing me to how short we are. However, during this time, and with all the issues we've had, I've not gone to the C O, to the border, anybody's can be, uh, trying to point a direction of who you take out to my easier, I can't say that, uh, reverse ban of the tariffs. Um, but my focus on, uh, and you know, usually look and know that, uh, I'm, we're here to tell it's all if I'm down to here, I focus at this point in the office, I would say, and publicly, staff expects me to stand up to them, and, uh, advocate for us, and I'm trying to advocate for my office at the same time, to be empathetic to everybody else that works as county. Through my corrections, officer attacked, hurt, um, a couple of them badly last week, and I, and I made some comments, um, in media, that are hurtful to the board supervisors, and I intend to be. When I talk about staff in the jail, I have to stand in front of my staff at this time, they know what we have in people, the county don't have people, admin, we don't have people, uh, but I have to sure I'm advocating them, at the same time, um, we all know the way things get parked out, uh, in the media, and so the full, uh, extra of what I talked about, uh, talkingly did make it in there, but if it did, but I don't mean to ever to weigh from the fact that I know, and I feel in part, wholeheartedly, that the board in this county are trying to our office. Been support of our office, all you, you can use to spare us, we felt like we were a miss, uh, getting nicked in this budget crisis, and I think that was intent, some people, not all on board, and we're really trying to work with the C O, make sure that you are hard to do that. Been some discussions about moving funds in prior fiscal year, we have on that, um, we have strict funds, it had been really difficult for us, Mr. Chair and I have talked a lot about being able to use impact fees, others in our track account, that unfortunate past, that wasn't, didn't go well with everybody in the county. And we're at a power with C O, of council, we have a board that are willing to use the fund stream, that through the auditors, this is done, kind of where we met with Paul and staff, identified a bunch of fund streams that we had, and then in their own research, presented to us, and gave comfort to feel like we can move some of these to share office costs. The other thing that's kicked around a little bit, internal county, any of our trust funds, sheriff's have only paid for sheriff office budget, we're not using our funds to pay for some other department, or some other team, or sales is mistaken, it's only been our office loss, and that's what we're doing. Um, I think through this, we've been able to all process and turn the sheriff's office, that, um, showing there's tightening that needs done, and that does nothing, I think it's nefarious, just thinking to have nine systems, I'll say my office particularly guarantees this will be leapfrog every department office in county. We're finding that their systems are not in place, should be there, that could help going forward, if can formalize the systems, have closed controls, and audit internally, because we have bits, um, but if we have what staff or site entry, maybe can read some, some of the things. I am grateful to the board supervisor, I orient public seat in my office, I just want to do, we can do help, that's what we've worked with the C O, uh, being restricted funds, covered thing could have been covered, I think is something that we should have done in the past, that's what Paul brought to our ten, and what we built to do together as a team, going forward, we know that we're going to have much better understanding, with Ann and Paul of how we use these things, how to move forward, I'm very grateful for partnership. Finally, we have a C O, want to think out of the box and rip off bandit and stuff, um, ideally, I don't have any to give, I don't have anybody's positions to give you, we kill backwards, incorrect or operations, at the same time, can collaborate with the, with the C O office and the judge office, H R, we found something short that we think can do, are going to hurt for us internally, but I think we can weather storm, and it's not going to affect public safety. So anything being presented to you, I want the fact of you, I think you need it, but feel comfortable, it feels horrid at the sheriff's office, that if we knew some of these things are a little comfortable, the C O and I have talked about, we understand we're offering, we understand the capability that it's going to have on us, there will be some reduction service, we're not talking about dudes around, people responding to calls, but there's going to be a bit of being felt by everybody, this, but I don't feel right, sitting back and doing nothing, and watch all these department offer, uh, speak, if you want to, to heal and say don't to sheriff's office. So I appreciate you, I appreciate comments we've had, just wanted an opportunity to say a closing here today, and if you had any questions for us specifically, we're going to present at the next, uh, workshop, I'm sorry, I think it's a little, I understand the, the content of the workshop would have been today, we'll do this one, and they'll have stuff here for, for next hearing, uh, just, I'd be remote, rather stand room with you, answering questions that you, thank you for letting me breathe.
Sure. Anything further? Uh, so, uh, we've got continuing hearing, we have the hearing solved Thursday at nine AM, that's well of the board, um, do we take vote on that when you call? We do. So I didn't need a motion to continue hearing, nine AM, Thursday?
Yeah, I'm to continue hearing tonight on Thursday.
All set.
Second, is in fifth.
I, oh, you want to call?
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, it's the.
Supervisor Mickey?
Yeah.
Super, there's anger?
Yes.
Super, right, so, supervisor Kurt?
Yes.
For a vote, should pass.
And we were doing a workshop here on Wednesday, is there a will on when and where to do that? There was discussion about, in Congress, Sheriff's Office. Go ahead.
Um, not maybe flinging transparent, I think the idea for, for me anyways, is that being of a conversation, and sometimes we're sitting here, doesn't let us as well to have that real conversation, so if we were going to it, I mean, if that's what everybody wants to see it doing in here, um, I'm okay with that, but I would ask for the consideration that we not sit there at the desk, to sit around, um, the conference table in front. The unfortunate part about that is, I don't think, um, is inclusive with incline like department heads, and so I liked the sheriffs, I think we probably figure them, so can make it, can expand it and larger, so to make sure all of our heads, uh, sitting at the table with us, it is not meant to exclude anybody, I think it's a goal, believe me, was to be more inclusive, have more of a part of the conversation, um, and really kind of dive in us together, and kind of a thing, so, um, I actually really like it at sheriff's office, like that can all be included in, but if it's a real problem, I'm with it being here, but would just ask be, uh, at the front current table, so those are my concerns on it.
Yeah, I'll say, um, I generally agree, the only problem, my is, if we do a, do a table that didn't solve the mic queue, we're out of, so it's kind of extraordinary there, I, I'm, I'm in print of where we do to be correct.
Um, really, I hear, uh, the departments, um, and the public for its fair purposes, this workshop is really to make it less formal and more engaging for departments, we can turn and do, and can do a, what, what happens where up here is, if, if we're on camera, and it'd be passed around weeks, and it takes more time, and it, to me, it loses that collaboration that we're trying to build, with the departments to be able to gather information, with it being formal, where a partner, a staff member can say, hey, I, I, why do it this way, I know we do it that way. Uh, so I'm more comfortable at the sheriff's office, because we're doing, is driving way deep, and, and we're going into lines, asking about, you know, specific key, and, and what all our methods are, um, we made through what, four departments? And that's without any mic, right? Efficiency purpose, I think we'll be much more efficient at the sheriff's office, because we collaborate more quickly, but that's my comment, but I do hear the public, uh, and a lot of this that we disclosed or found out at the workshop, we will be bringing back to public hearing, anything that's relevant that we discuss, so, um, it's just more roundable, um, collaboration, that's two cents.
So for the sheriff's office, um, for.
You go down on yourself, so that we can.
And. For the sheriff's office, so is there a, that we can, um, potentially address, and you serve out, um, zoom and.
Of branch I T D, I mean, I had a touch, have made some, uh, and some, it's the decision, and, um, in the, all the prints available online, and, but what they show, which is going to be posted, what you're going to do is include down to the factors, sees, for everybody reset, it's going to be survey for the park, so the people will be to see, they have a telethon, they see it, I look in the image as well.
Yep, um, even if it's at the same level of melody with the cast, some of the camera, the zoom out.
Yeah.
Won't tend to be with, with, uh, you have the open system where you're talking, and you have to pass micro, my is concerned, we're passing microphone around, be able to.
They might as well do it here, so.
Yeah, doesn't get a fin.
Find that on YouTube, whispers may have the table.
We'll have to, but I, it could.
So it works, nine AM, Wednesday, hearing, nine AM today, uh, and now the hearing, thank you very much.